I'll start. Great. Well, welcome everyone to the special session. This is our last special session as we call them from the community of practice. And as we have done with all the other community sessions, we want to thank all the co sponsors for supporting this and many of the people that are going to be on the line, I'm sure are members of this, but and others will still continue to join. I know that takes time for people to come in. Just so the the speakers today or their or their people who will join us know what we're talking about. The key message of the community of practice is that community is medicine. That we know throughout human history, our ability to join together has always been key to responding effectively and creatively and adapting to complex problems. And that's what the climate problem is. And by working at the community level, again, we could do this. And so we always talk about through the community practice. Remembering that if trauma can be passed down through generations, then so can healing and what we call transformational resilience. Meaning people can use adversities to actually learn and grow and increase their sense of well being and the well being of the community. That's adversity based growth. That's our way of talking about transformation resistance is our way of talking about adversity based growth. We thought that was too wonky for the general public. So we call transformation resistance. So that's our mission. So today we're going to in the special session, we're going to talk about how public agencies can support local resilience coordinating networks or steering committees. And we have today Sonia Cole, who's with the Washington Department of Child and Family Welfare Services, Bo Dean, who's with the New Hanover County in North Carolina, Nancy Riggle, who's with actually a nonprofit, but contract with the county or state, and she'll say more about that with Valley Residential. And about down the road here in a few minutes, Adam Krevling, who's with the Virginia Office of Trauma and Resilience Policy is going to join us. And what we want to discuss today is from the presenters initially, and then we'll just have a dialogue. Given your experience, how can public agencies meaningfully and support local resilience coordinating councils and networks, those local resilience groups? And what barriers exist to you doing that work to public agencies, supporting resilience groups? And how can you overcome those barriers? So any thoughts on that that you have would be very, very helpful. And with that, I'm going to sort of turn off my slides and just open it up to actually, let's see how many people. Let's, let's do a very quick round of introductions in just 10 seconds. Can each of the community of practice participants introduce themselves? And then we'll hear from the speakers. Jesse, can you read the names one at a time and just again, very briefly, because we want to get into the discussions? Just do a quick introduction to yourself.
Very gladly going in order, Lois.
Lois Cody from Manchester, New Hampshire. I volunteer as a project development team member with Red McKenzie, who's on this call. Thank you.
Thanks, Lois. Scott.
Hi folks, I'm Scott Vu, he can pronounce, I'm with Monmouth County Behavioral Health Division on the suicide prevention team. Thanks.
That's Oregon. Great. Thank you.
Reb.
Reb McKenzie, Claremont, New Hampshire, developer with Lois of the Transformational Resilience Project. Thank you.
Thanks, Reb. Sam.
Hi, Sam Loughry Black in Washington, the U.K. I co facilitate parent care, climate circles with the Climate Psychology Alliance, run a community garden, run a kids woodland stay and play and co director of the local environmental action.
Thanks, Sam. Lilian.
Thank you, Liliana Vridara. I work with the intersection of climate emergency and health at all levels. And also create and support professionals who are doing this work, especially at the emotional and societal capacity and skills building.
Thank you so much. Giovanni.
Luke, good morning. I'm Giovanni Scolari with Allegany County Developmental Supports in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And oversee individuals with special needs from and developmental dispos, individual disabilities as well as autism.
Thank you so much. Bara.
Hey, everybody. Barapalyan, he can pronounce with the City Minneapolis Health Department. I'm the resilience hub project coordinator.
Appreciate it very much. Callie.
Hello, everyone. Callie Tennis, Healthy Village in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania.
Cindy.
Good morning, Cindy Armstrong, Sussex County, New Jersey. I am a mental health clinician and also work for the county as a mental health services coordinator.
Thank you so much. Haley.
Hi, everyone. I'm Haley Bain. I work for the Division of Child and Family Wellbeing in State of North Carolina in the U.S. And I'm the lead collaborative coordinator for North Carolina System of Care.
Thank you so much. Becky.
Hi, everybody. I'm Becky Turner with the Community Resilience Initiative.
Thanks, Becky. And then our three friends who are not on camera, no pressure to come off mute if you cannot, but Melvina. No worries, Melvina. If I see you come off mute, we'll come back to you. Mary Ann, I saw you come on camera.
Good morning or good morning here. Mary Ann Cypher, Lincoln County Public Health, and I'm their climate and health staffer. Happy to be here.
Thank you so much. Thrilled you're here as well. And Julio. No worries there as well. We'll commend the group very quickly on, I believe, the fastest round of group introductions on a Zoom call I've ever been on. That is difficult to do. And we're thrilled that all of you are here. Bob, I'll pass it back over to you.
Great. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I want to just have the group that with the people that we've invited to join us, just do a very brief introduction and then I'll pose questions to you. But also if all of you participants have questions, please post those in chat. And Christian will start to read some of those. But Sonia, can you do a brief introduction?
Yes, certainly. I'm Sonia Cole, and I supervise public child welfare in a very little corner rural county in Washington State. And I've been a bureaucrat with this agency for thirty six and a half years.
Thank you. Bo, Dean.
Hey, everybody. I am Bo Dean. I'm the senior HR analyst for learning and development for 2,100 of the most amazing public servants in the world. And I have the privilege also of being on the steering committee of the new Hanover County Resilience Task Force. I'm also a Crem trainer, community resilience model trainer and resources for resilience trainer and love all things resilience.
And he's also coined a new term, climate informed. So we did.
Climate informed.
Great. Perfect. And Nancy.
Hi, Nancy Riggle. I'm the executive director of Valley Residential Services. We serve people with developmental disabilities in a supported living program, homeless veterans as well. And we have a small contract with DCYF with Sonia and her folks to serve families that are linked somehow with the DCFS process, DCYF process, sorry. So I, because we have a large agency, I get to do some direct service quite a bit, actually. And I fell in love with the resilience movement many, many years ago. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you all. And again, we'll have somebody else or Adam Krevling join us soon, sometime soon, who's with the Virginia Office of Trauma and Resiliency Policy. So let's let me ask a couple of questions and from the for the three panelists who are here to get us going. But again, please post questions for any of these folks in chat and Christian will start to read them. But for any of you, how it, how do you support the local resilience groups, the local resilience initiatives in your county or in your community? What are the different ways in which you have tried to support them financially? Or in other ways, engaging other agencies or personnel in film, et cetera. So I'll just throw that open. Anybody who wants to take the first shot at it, please do.
Well, I guess I'll start. I'm always talking.
You're doing a good job.
In Walla Walla County, very early on, the Community Resilience Initiative began with Terry Barilla, that some of you know her. She's a, she's a biologist who stumbled onto the trauma informed movement. And so she pretty much convened a lot of us to work together. We didn't feel like we were on an island by ourselves by any means. So we had state people like Sonia there. We had educators. We had private nonprofit groups. We had just a lot of community people involved. So that was an easy thing for somebody to kind of get us all involved because we get to be really busy. We live in a small community and we network super well. We don't have a lot of territorialism, I don't think. So we were all kind of on this mission together.
Great. Thank you. Bo, how have you engaged?
Well, I would follow up. So after we had a major hurricane and we're in Hurricane Alley called Hurricane Florence about what's going on six years now, community resilience model came in and did a bunch of training. We leveraged the county to then become a partner with a local resilience task force. So we sit on that task force as part of the steering committee. And we work to leverage how the task force is then able to lift inside the community and it become sort of that major part of the task force itself for New Hanover County. And then it permeates other parts. So whether it's communities and schools or other agencies, then the county becomes a large part because obviously if we're taking care of those that are providing services to folks, then and we're taking care of the providers, then we're able to better take care of the people that they're serving. So it becomes an integral part of it and it has grown exponentially. But the other part of this that's grown is the National Association of Counties, so NACO. So NACO has really taken on a lot of this work and they're looking at trauma informed. I just went to a meeting in a rural county a couple of weeks ago where they're looking at some of we're beneficiaries of the opioid settlements. And so they're looking at trauma informed when it comes to dispersing of funds. And they're starting to see how if you're not looking at this through a trauma informed lens or through a and a resilience lens, then it's less effective. So it's, it's really going through the state, it's going through the counties, and it's leveraging that as a way of making this more efficacious. And it's really powerful. I, I wish I could share this with you, but there's an image that even our child protective services in North Carolina have created where they took it to the fore adverse experiences and really made a fully developed image for us to be able to work with and sharing what our folks are going through, but also what our providers are going through. So that's been our huge lift for making this really permeate.
Thank you, Bo. Let me just say that the group has seen that chart in a previous presentation. So they might, and also the Crem that they're talking about is Elaine Miller Karas's Trauma Resource Institute model that you've heard about.
Yes, she is my mother goddess. Yes.
Okay. And Elaine joined us, I think, two sessions ago. I'm going to tell her that. Mother goddess. Nancy, any thoughts?
Oh, I think I talked already, but maybe.
Okay, well, no. So Sonia, we'll go to Sonia. Excuse me.
I was just busy taking notes from what Bo was saying. I'm, I'm intrigued. When I stopped to think about my involvement with our local resilience organization, I, I, it just keeps coming to me how much I have benefited from my association with them as well as my agency has benefited. I became involved with Terry Brilla almost twenty years ago and at her invitation, sat with her on committees, family policy council, the community network, just as the public bureaucrat representative basically, and just absorbed. And then I guess taking that information and those light bulbs that came on for me and that awareness of what was happening in the community outside of our whole, you know, government tunnel. I just shared that with everybody who would listen and many who wouldn't. And my agency just became kind of a cheerleader, I guess, and a spreader of good gossip. Which is kind of my, my little micro way of trying to make a difference. And that's, that's probably how it started for me, just being involved with the local resilience organization. I now sit on the board, which I've been doing since before it became a nonprofit. But I, but again, my contribution doesn't seem very significant other than just trying to open windows in the tower that is my government agency. And to some to some little successes here and there, I was taught by my mentor many years ago to keep the ball in play. It's like pinball. Keep as many levers moving as you can. It doesn't, don't, don't ever narrow down to just a few levers. Keep all of them busy, crazy busy. So because you want to keep it in play. And so I guess I'm just always looking for that pathway where a leader might be focused more on principles and vision than they are on rules. And if that leader can be somebody in my chain of command, then we're going to make some progress. I'm going to keep pushing for these opportunities. And if not, then I'm just going to keep it in play in whatever way I can. And it's been hit and miss. My chain of command hasn't, in this little agency, sometimes it's very focused on rules and job description. And there's nothing in my, I mean, you know, sometimes that makes it less fertile environment to grow these concepts. But in sharing the resilience and trauma informed concepts and models with my agency, we have managed to do a few things. And I'll just tell you a couple of practical things. It started with creating kind of a new language and how we talked about clients. And I've been a supervisor for twenty years. And so I have the opportunity to influence a little bit what language workers learn when they are hired here and how they talk about their, the people they're serving and in terms of what happened to them and not what's wrong with them. And just very rudimentary kind of concepts. But the more, the more you model that and preach that and shape that, the more normal it becomes. So I guess trying to normalize trauma informed thinking in my agency has been one of the ways I've tried to spread that, but always always crediting, you know, the community players who are doing that and bringing them in for sharing their stories. We had, I had a boss at one point who was in charge of our regional budget, who was very visionary and was open to creating actually a partnership. The only time money ever came into the, the partnership, public, private partnership was when he was willing to set aside a chunk for me to help Terry design a project for their neighborhood organizers to come alongside our clients, families and do the kind of support and service that was more about connection and neighborhood building than it was about mental health or any evidence based therapy curriculum. So that was probably the most unusual partnership we were able to pull off. And it was temporary, but it taught us quite a bit of things. What else can I tell you? Let me take a little break, but we'll go to pivot to somebody else. We can come back.
Sounds good. Those are very, very helpful, insightful comments. But the general question again that you raised and others is how do you help agency staff, especially when they're restricted by what they believe are rules and regulations? Think about becoming trauma informed. Get out of their sort of mental models that they've been trained in and really engage in community based trauma informed work. Any thoughts, have any, any specific examples that you can share?
Well, I, I, I love the aha moment question. So I'm going to take that one if you guys don't mind.
Go for it.
For me, when, early on in the work of CRI, Terry Barilla did a lot of training. So I think I went to her first training on adverse childhood experiences and resilience. And you have to know about me that I have a lowly bachelor's degree, but I have a PhD in life. All of, I was a foster mom for fourteen years. Most of the kids who came into my home, Sonia can validate, were kids that had a lot of challenging behavioral issues and bounced a lot. So I had lived experience that way. All of the people that we support at Valley Residential Services are very low income with the exception of several. They've all been very stigmatized by their experiences. All, all of our folks with developmental disabilities, as Giovanna, Giovani knows, are, they're very stigmatized, they're very they are very low income. There are a lot of cognitive, you know, there are cognitive issues there that we have to work through. Our families that we support are, have pretty much been traumatized throughout their entire lives. Our homeless veterans are in our program because they've medicated themselves with drugs and alcohol to try to mitigate their adverse childhood experiences. So my aha moment started right at the beginning, folks. First of all, when I went through training, I thought, thank you God for my parents, that I have zero adverse childhood experiences. Felt guilty about it, you know, and then thought about my kids because we adopted five children through the foster care system who were older kids. I say that most of them were looked at as pretty unadoptable. And so I knew that they had been through horrendous things. And I had to manage the parenting aspects of dealing with them, had to manage myself, of course, so that I could be regulated and had to help them go through what they've gone through. Then I thought about our clients at VRS and it was just like, just I, I would say I got hit by a fifty pound boulder through the eyes. How's that? And then what we did, because I don't like to just sit on stuff. I never have been one to do that. We're the nineteenth largest employer in Walla Walla County. We have usually around two hundred staff in our three different programs, most of them in our supported living program. So we started training our staff. I became a trainer and we actually have a twelve hour curriculum now on, on ACEs, resilience and how to work with yourself to calm down because you find out that people that go into a caregiving role sometimes have a lot of adverse childhood experiences themselves. Our clients are really hard and it might trigger them in their responses to our clients and our staff. So we did that right off the bat. We did all training. We tried really hard to keep up on that. Now we do, we don't train at the beginning, but we train as we go along on adverse childhood experience and resilience. And then I'm really blessed because I get to work with families. I love my families that I work with. I get to work one on one in people's homes and and we have to form a relationship. And pretty early on, I figured out that almost all of the families I work with have a huge amount of adverse childhood experiences and need resilience. So I work one on one with our families on that. I also do this thing called the family values exercise, which is super compelling to help people look at where their family of origin brought them and where they go now. And it's, it's been very, very telling and touches my heart. So and then because of the Community Resilience Initiative, having these monthly meetings with us, we had to be flipping accountable, right? We had to come back to the meeting and say, this is what we're doing. This is how we're doing it. You know, give me some ideas. And I got stuck for a while and where do we go from here? And people helped me with that to help me guide our process along. Oh, the family values exercise. Yes, I will, I will send it to you. I'm seeing in the chat. So yeah, they're, they're just, I, I was pretty on fire with this and so were my partners in the community and I appreciate that very much. So yeah, you can hit me with questions if you want later.
Thank you. I see some questions stacking up here, but let me just get a chance to hear from Bo if you have any thoughts on these issues that you heard from other, the other speakers.
Well, yeah. So the aha moment for us obviously was that the hurricane, but the first responders were a big part of this discussion, our social workers. Sonia, I really loved your comments there. You know, we are vicariously, our people, people in public service are constantly encountering people at the worst periods and moments of their lives. And so you are, you are constantly moving out into spaces where people are struggling. You're, that's living in your body. How do you resolve what's living in your body? And I, and I remember when Mike was training us in that room right after Hurricane Florence and we were, we were, it was really struggling. I had a heart issue right after Hurricane Florence and there were, there were several of us in the room and I had that aha moment when someone said, this is not mental weakness, this is biology. And that was the moment at which I think a bunch of us, it clicked with us, this is it. This is what we need to be talking about and moving through. Not only for us as public service folks, but also for any caregiver that's out there, but also in the community. Because what we were doing, what I was doing was I was getting through and I was very proud of myself that in New Hanover County, all of us are on duty during any kind of emergency, right? So not every county is like that, but here we are. But we're not necessarily first responders. So for us, we're, we're getting through and we're doing what we need to do. And we were seeing things at their worst. But public service people do that on a daily basis, regardless of an emergency. So what are we doing to take care of ourselves so we can take care of others? And then how are we helping in our communities, especially when we're talking about marginalized communities as well, to not only just get through, because resilience can be a really negative word, but also to be healthy and thrive and connect? That's where this became the game changer. And so our, our training to what Nancy was saying, what we're doing to lift that, not only did to be that intentional training, but also to permeate other things that we were doing. So here's the deal. You become an employee at New Hanover County. We're going to start off a conversation about where are you? What is the land you're standing on? So we do land acknowledgements. We talk about indigenous people that lived and thrived here before colonization. That had never been talked about before and that there are health equity issues that still exist here that existed because of that, that are hundreds of years after the fact, right? We also talk about, you're talking about an area that is the only coup in the history of this country. I just put it in the chat. And so we live in a trauma informed area that has generational trauma that is still not complete, that's not resolved. So as Risma talks about, it's still got a lot of dirty pain, right? And so we have issues that we still have that bubble up. If you're going to come work here, be aware, connect to those. Get outside of the back of your head to the end of your nose and connect with other lived experiences. And that way we're connecting at a higher level. So it becomes part of not only our onboarding process, but then how do we resolve that as you continue to work through, connect with each other so that we can move it out? Does that make sense? And, and I think that becomes, it's like breathing. You're not just doing it in a training in a one hour or ninety minute, you're doing it in our daily practice. So on our, on our desks, I have laminated and we have the reset. So you have a, a reset sitting on your desk. Or you have fidgets in every meeting. Or people are doing, I love it that I hear back, people are doing one to ten to start a meeting and checking in on each other. Those kinds of things become not perfect. No, we're not doing anything perfectly. But the culture has changed where we're starting to check in on each other because we know that in order to keep our service going, we've got to be able to do that to take care of each other. That I think is the big part. And I've got two years, two different employee surveys now that have data that show this is making some change for our folks and making a difference. And that's some power behind it too. So again, I get so excited about this because y'all, I said it one time, we're creating empathy fairies, we're creating compassion fairies everywhere we go by doing this all across this, you know, the country. But we're doing it because it really does make a difference. This is not fluff. This is not hoity dory. This is really about connecting in our bodies. And I think that's powerful. So Bob, I, I, again, I, I think that's power in what we're talking about.
Thank you, Bo. That was wonderful. Thank you all three for, for that. I see that Adam has joined us. Adam, are you there? And can you just do a very brief introduction?
Good afternoon. My name is Adam Krevling. I am a policy specialist in the Office of Trauma and Resiliency Policy here in Virginia in our Office of Department of Social Services. Good to be with you all this afternoon.
Great. Thank you for joining us. And what we've been talking about is how does your agency help support the local resilience initiatives that are underway in the, in the state and that your case, the Virginia trauma informed community networks? that are underway in the, in the state and in your case, the Virginia Trauma Informed Community Networks? Do you have any thoughts on different ways that you have supported those initiatives or your agency has in terms of getting others to engage, getting public support for them, et cetera? Any, any thoughts you want to share?
Sure. So we, our agency is doing a handful of things in regards to trying to build resiliency and sustain resiliency at the state level here in Virginia. One of those things is that we convened a TILT, which is a trauma-informed leadership team that's represented with a variety of state agencies, Department of Education, Juvenile Justice, the Governor's Office for State and Sound Task Force, Department of Health, our local Medicaid State Office. And so that, that group convenes monthly to share and collaborate on best practices as it relates to trauma-informed care. Similar, similar, I'm assuming how you all do in regards to community of practice. As we know, a lot of times it's information silos within state agencies. And so really trying to create a pathway to have those conversations and maintain those conversations. I will say Virginia is unique. We're one of three states that actually has an Office of Trauma. And so we are unique in the space that we actually have dedicated staff that are intentionally looking at trauma-informed and resiliency best practices. Some of those things that you were talking about, Bob, so we provide funding to the community. There's no way we can do this without the community. And so we provide funding to some of the local trauma-informed community networks. One of those projects that we've been funding for the last two, two years is called a Healing Community Organization. And some of those folks represent United Way Facilities, Health Departments. And that's for the, the agencies to be able to perform their own trauma-informed agency assessments, to look at that data, to see what's working, what's not working, how well that information is shared. You're latterly across the agency, meeting anyone from IT all the way up to the board and with that information and then disseminate that, then disseminate that information back out to their fellow trauma-informed community agencies. And so that, that's fairly unique. We've been doing that for the last year and a half. Unfortunately, that money runs out in October. And so really looking about, looking at this point about sustainability, which is one of the huge hurdles with, with this work is the sustainability piece. Another component that we're using is a media campaign with one of our local trauma-informed community networks, looking at, you know, e-learning and different online modules to support the work. As you all may be aware, that Resiliency Week is coming up soon. And so part of that funding also goes to showcase all the work that's going on locally and throughout the Commonwealth, lifting up resiliency that's healing-centered. One other last thing I'll say is that here in Virginia, we also implemented the Science of Hope, which is out of Oklahoma. I'm not sure if folks are familiar with that. And so that, that's been a huge lift that we've been taking on to really look, look at how we're addressing wellbeing, how we're looking at retention. We know vicarious trauma is a huge component of what the workforce is experiencing. And so really trying to be mindful of how we're supporting our, our, our staff internally as well as externally. So those are just a handful of things that we've been doing here in Virginia, Bob.
Thank you very, very much for that. It's a, a big handful. So it's a lot, a lot bigger handful than many other states are doing, obviously. So I want to, I have a couple of other questions, but let me turn it back over to Christian. Christian, I see a couple of questions in chat. Do you want to just see if you can pose a few of those? And then I'll summarize with a couple of other questions.
Yes, excellent. Thank you to our panelists for being so active and engaged in the chat. It's great to see all these emergent conversations happening. Circling back up to the top of our questions, just posing this out to the entire panels. What language do you use to reach people who aren't familiar with trauma-informed resilience, public health, or other lingo?
Anyone can respond.
So since we deal directly with clients here, we just start with the ACEs and resilience stuff and we'll do it one-on-one or one-on-family or within a big group, however, it's done. We try to simplify lingo here and acronyms because we all talk in acronyms so much. So you got to meet the needs of the people, so it depends on the person. We have, I've got to say, we've had a lot more challenges with that, with our people with developmental disabilities, because it's hard for them to, to understand all the concepts here.
Thank you. Bo or Sonya or Adam?
Sure. So I'd say, so we've had several internal staff meetings that address over twelve hundred staff where we presented on trauma-informed, person-centered language, providing examples from, say, policies that are using outdated or jargon. And so we, we've also created a one pager that kind of has trauma-informed language and what that looks like, kind of as a check sheet to make sure that we are using person-centered, not pathologizing language. And so we've really been trying to be mindful about what that looks like. As I mentioned with the Science of Hope, a huge component of that is being hope-centered. And so be mindful of what our language is that we're using when we talk about policies and programs moving forward.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm starting to become like really a big fan of Sonya, so I was kind of deferring to her. And then I was going to talk, Sonya, I, I thought you were about to speak, did you?
Well, I just keep taking notes from you and Adam. So I don't, I don't feel like I've got a ton to offer. But in my world, it's been so much about sowing seeds, constantly sowing seeds. And when I'm dealing with in-house, it's using, using the language that, that my, my administrators or my agency speaks. So if they're concerned about worker retention, I'm going to talk about retention issues in terms of burnout and secondary trauma stewardship. I'm going to bring in those concepts and then I'm going to link it with, by the way, this is what I'm learning. And how about if I have somebody come and talk about that? And if we're talking with clients, Adam just put it beautifully, person-centered language where it's not pathologizing, but it's really just listening to what they're experiencing and the words they use to talk about their lives. And then being able to help them, being able to help open their window to this, this could be related. And a lot of people, when they experience this, also experience this. And it's not, there's nothing wrong with you, it's just you've been through a lot and here's what, here's what might help. So, so it depends on who you're talking to.
Yeah, I, I wanted to piggyback. So when we formed our internal, we call it the Resilience Working Group inside of county government, we, we decided we're going to take everybody that's doing something that's resilience-based and put them together. So whether it was CREM or whether it was peer support, we have TILT too, but that's Trauma-Informed Leadership Team for social work. So these are the folks that when a big incident comes up, they know they can sort of lean in on each other and that's the TILT team. And so they were, and then there's the Crisis Intervention, Stress Management, SISM. So there's all these different groups that were doing something with regards to showing up for each other with regards to helping during those times. What we were trying to do by getting all of them together was making sure that there was some kind of biological practice that was going on so that there was that wellness that was happening on top of the response. Does that make sense? So now that working team meets monthly and we do practice together. We're engaging and uplifting each other, all that kind of good stuff. So that resilience working group is a component of now of county government. So we actually have that as a working team. But we're not trying to say one is better than the other or that kind of, we're trying to get everybody sort of cohesive. It's the same thing in the community. You may have something that's a religious practice or that is, you know, really working for you in terms of how you're lifting in the community. But hey, let's join together as a resilience task force and they come together monthly. And then we bind that up. There's a, there's a group right now called Fronting Life, which I love this group. They're a little cultish and I kind of like the cultish kind of vibe. But they do yoga and body and semantic, some somatic practice. And I love their, their vibe is fabulous. But when they come together with us, they can give some of their practice along with some others and it builds culture for everybody. And somebody just said, hey, would you, would you create a hub? Well, I'm not sure about bricks and mortar, but that's the hub. Because a hundred different groups are coming together monthly under Javon Askeba, who is our Director of the Task Force, and they're sharing these practices. And as a result, they're building this practice. Does that, and I just, I love that. We've never had that before. And so that's building better community all the way around it. And it's not government doing it, it's not church doing it or synagogue, it's the community doing it. And that, I think, is really neat. And I've got, I just gave my age, I just said neat, I'm sorry.
That's awesome. You've just given me an idea. Because Becky from CRI and Walla Walla does a community of practice monthly meeting. And it's, it's, it's fantastic. But it's given me ideas about how it could be broader. So I'm going to get the word out. Thank you.
Hundred percent. Well, that's, that's what that's all about. I, I just wanted to add one more thing because I know I have to leave a little bit early and I don't want to dominate. But one thing that happened this year with the opioid settlement funds and the mental health funds we got out of something else was just had an idea, another practitioner named Amy Reed, just an amazing woman, gave me a kind of a, a brain opening and I went to management and they said yes. So what we're doing is we're trying to help our schools. Well, y'all know everywhere you go, lots going on in schools. So the idea was we were going to have a, a day where we take some folks out of schools and we give them, and it's called the Crisis Critical Response and Readiness Conference is what we called it. The idea was you bring in these folks that are in our schools, they have two tracks. One is called CCI, one is CREM. Depending on what training they had, they would go to one or the other. And the third track, everybody got QPR, which is question, persuade, and respond on suicidal ideations. The idea here is they would have some training to equip them whenever they are working with students and, and themselves inside of the schools in the beginning of the day. They also would have some activities, we would give them, everyone got a copy of Building Resilience from my mother goddess, from the resilience here. Maybe Bob will add your book to it the next time. But everybody's equipped with some things that they don't normally get. And in the afternoon, they would take that training and they would meet with community partners who would be the people that would be responsive if there was a crisis. So they met with one section of people that were emergency responders, one section of people that are in the community that are providing services, see what I mean? And then mental health people, et cetera. We did a hundred and twenty-five this first time and now we've been funded for four more times because it was wildly successful. That, I think, is something that we can keep on building as a community where we give people that are in practice opportunities for specific training to equip them, but also connect them to the providers that are actually giving the services so that they're fully equipped. And then after what we're doing is every week, we're sending them information to keep them equipped. So that's another practice that we've just recently built in that we're seeing some success around. We just happen to be lucky right now that we have some funding to make this happen. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Brilliant.
Thank you. I just want to make one quick comment on resilience hubs, that the key is the social infrastructure in communities, not a physical hub. If the social infrastructure, the groups decide to nominate or designate an area as a physical hub, that's great, but it's best to have them do that because they know places they trust and people will go there, et cetera, et cetera. But, but starting with the physical and trying to build from there is much, much more difficult. It's the social infrastructure, it's those connections that we found to be absolutely the key, key area. So any other comments that, following up on Bo's comment? Otherwise we'll move to another question? Christian, you want to ask another question?
Yes, alrighties. So are any of you folks working with embodied practices and/or somatics as a foundation for community engagement or support? Either way, I am curious about your experience with systems of care or communities over time.
Anybody want to take a shot?
That's a good question. I'll just, I'll just start with the micro and then you know it's going to get better from there. Our, our agency has been very slow to embrace or institutionalize anything resembling body work, while many of us in the work know how critical that is. And so I was fortunate enough to be exposed to Teresa Bonacani's, Posse Conny's Ease Keys and just took three of them and make it a habit kind of when I start the meetings I have influence over, to try to start with some of those and give her credit and mention, oh, there's plenty more. And, you know, constantly sowing those seeds, but at least starting with the stretching and the horizon gazing and the setting of the seat, the head balloon, some things to say now. Now this is how we, this is how we breathe and make better decisions and we become better people so that we're ready to go back out there and serve folks. Anyway, that's a very micro example.
Thank you. You have the thoughts? Christian, how about ask any other questions? You see, I see a bunch of them on there and we're all, we're having two conversations, one by video and the other is by chat, but which is great. But any other key questions you see?
Yeah. Do we have anyone using dogs, art, nature, or other nonverbal supports to help engage people who might not otherwise feel comfortable engaging?
Yes, so we have Paws For People, we're, we're using dogs in FIRE and Sheriff. And actually, our district attorney has some companion dogs that come in that are absolutely phenomenal. And that has been, Paws For People is a nonprofit that's actually been supported by the university. That's been very helpful. We have one of the largest footprints of veterans in our areas that have been served in this region. That's where the program started, was for our veterans. And then it's really expanded for services in, inside of the county, but also in the community as well. But there's an art program that, I don't know if you've ever seen Your Brain on Art, but there's an art program that has been really phenomenal. And our local museum has done some really great grant writing around, just recently. I have museum memberships downstairs in our wellness clinic for people that are going through chemotherapy right now or cancer treatment. Or they're doing, they're doing art resilience days. The, the director of our museum, Heather Wilson, embraced resilience. And so she's doing resilience days at our local museum. So again, it becomes a community thing. But I'm, I'm having one of my COVID brain moments where I'm, I'm forgetting the actual program that is so amazing that one of our partners does. But art has been a huge lift and this is, believe it or not, in Wilmington, North Carolina, we're a very artsy community and we love it. And so that has been a big part of it. So yes, the answer to that is yes.
Bo, if you come up with that resource after you're off the call, feel free to email it to us and we can share that with folks, just so you know.
Any other thoughts? Adam or Sonya or Nancy?
I'll say like, so we have a hundred and twenty tick-ins, we have a hundred and twenty community-informed networks. And so they're all doing different things. And a lot of them do embody art as well as body work. I would also say at my time with the State Behavioral Health Department, they have an Office of Recovery Services that is, is operated and facilitated by people that are, have lived experience with mental health and addiction and different trauma. And every September during recovery month, they, they do all kinds of events and presentations and storytelling in regards to art. And so there are, there are a variety of things going on here in Virginia as it relates to that.
Great. Any other thoughts? Let, let me ask one question to everybody. I know Bo has to go here. What are the prettiest obstacles that you face in trying to engage your agency or other public agencies and staff in local resilience activities? And how have you decided or how have you found to overcome those obstacles? What are the key obstacles? Is it mental models? Is it the funding streams that constrain things? What, what are the obstacles?
Uh huh. And yes, and yes, all of the above.
I, I, since I do have to run, I'm just going to say funding is an issue. I think that right now, I think Adam said it beautifully, you know, funding is running out. But if you have state leadership, it's great to have it. I think political wins can really make a difference. And when you're looking at budgets and they start to become tighter and they look at words that don't necessarily fit certain ideas about the way budget should be written and they see words like resilient or they see words like wellness and things like that, it doesn't always come to the right ways of community. It doesn't always come to the right ways of communicating and engaging in community. So how we're able to communicate this, how we're able to draw the parallel to what this means in terms of the significance of connection and what a difference it makes. I, I had a meeting this morning with the district director of Duke Energy, who's our power plant. And one of the discussions we had was the power grid and what a difference that makes for marginalized communities. And that is a part of resilience. That is a part of what we're doing. That's climate change. That's a part of what we're doing to keep people connected. That becomes a discussion where we start having, when you talk about languaging, you have to really make sure that we're staying agile and current with what's going on out there. And online cognitive space, not emotional brain, not survival brain, but we're in that cognitive space with the people that are making those decisions and really staying current with what it is that's necessary to make that happen. From a government standpoint, that is, you know, what I'm trying to, to negotiate with and then keep that funding going so that we can continue this work because it is absolutely essential, in my opinion. But it's also my experience, not just my opinion.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I would say, so again, one of our sister agencies has the thing called a love campaign, which is lifting up voices. And so there's different initiatives going on throughout our state where they're trying to, to bring that awareness. Again, as state agencies, we can't advocate. So that's one of those kind of caveats. One of our big hurdles is the fact that our tickens aren't entities within themselves. So they're, they're doing a lot of other things. And so that makes the capacity, the ability to provide money, a lot more complicated and providing, having to bring in like a third party. And so if those agencies did become their own entity, it would streamline things a little bit better. One thing that we've been doing with our community organizations is looking at really what does strategic planning look like? Because again, a lot of times in this work, we're just chasing the money. And so what are some of those sustainability factors? And so we, we brought in facilitators to really help, help build out what strategic planning looks like in regards to, you know, trying to sustain and fund this work going forward. Because it is definitely a lift.
I was going to say the biggest impediment for me is me. How's that? I think that I tend to get pretty scattered, but I think that probably like turnover in agencies, turnover within our own agency and turnover in other agencies. You've got to have some champion to push it forward. And people don't stay in their jobs as long as they used to do, so they get on other things.
Any other thoughts? Thank you. So we just have a few minutes left, but Christian, is there any other questions that pop up that we might be able to?
Yes. And folks, if, if your question wasn't able to be answered in the session here, I'll be following up with an email. So just make sure we hit everything here. We touched a little bit about resilience hubs here in the chat and in the session here, but just wanted to pose this question to the full panel. How would you recommend building out something like your resilience task force through something like a resilience hub? Here in Minneapolis, we have two CBO-owned community centers we are working with to become resilience hubs. And I'm wondering if you have recommendations to have those community centers be the nexus of bringing different partners together to build these resilience networks?
Far be it for me to say what works in your community, but what works in ours is a lot of networking and we, a lot of times we serve the same kind of clientele. We work together. We have a group of nonprofits that meets every month. So all of this stuff, we just network and have our own hub, I guess. But you do have to have someone who can serve as the center of that hub, I think. That, I mean, that's been invaluable for me. It's been the only reason this has moved forward in our agency.
Thank you.
I would just mention that when, when, when that was done in Walla Walla that I am most familiar with, it started with relationships. Whoever talked about it's, it's based on social reality before it's based on the physical reality. In my experience, it's absolutely true. So that community where that center is located, those neighbors around there, got to have relationships with them. And what are they interested in? What are their primary concerns? And, and collectively, what do they have in common? And how can they come together? And then it's, it's about pulling together the, you know, community and figuring out how they can meet these neighbors where they're at. Can any of those services that the neighbors are concerned about or the things they really want? Can those things come to the community center rather than neighbors having to go elsewhere in town to access those? Just little things like that.
Yeah. And I'll add one other thing that, that I put a comment in chat about that. But you know, physical hubs are going to be limited also by just the physical realities of what's happening. So we just had a major ice storm out in Oregon. People couldn't get to a hub and the hub didn't have electricity anyway, if it had one. And the same is true with the, sometimes the hub, the physical hub might burn down in a wildfire. But the social networks, the connections that people have, so they're, they're telling everybody what's happening and, and knowing somebody that might need extra help. Oh, they're, they're immobile over there three blocks away. Let's go help them out. That's really the key. And that the social, the physical hubs can help with that. So we only have a few minutes left. Let me just ask, do any of the three of you that's left, Bo had to leave us, have a final comment that you can offer, final observation or suggestion for how to, the people on the line can help their public agency engage in and support local community resilience building efforts? Any just final comments?
Well, I, because we are like boots on the ground here at VRS, get your boots on the ground people involved. I mean, I train people on how to do family values exercises. I go to different agencies. I went to DCYF with it. And it's just, you know, really invaluable to get your boots on the ground people. If they just start with one person or one family and get their feet wet. And then if other people have ideas on exercises that you can use, group, group activities, it's really great.
Thank you.
I'd say for us, again, a lot of times it's, it's bringing back that voice of the, the people with lived experience. And so also being really mindful of what the community wants. And so that's a huge component of having people with lived experience, you know, affiliated with some of our leadership and how we're doing programs and policies, making sure that they, that we're staying relevant and current to the population. Because for me, I'm not boots on the ground anymore. I work in the state office. And so it's, it's a little different. But I think again, being mindful of what the community wants, really listening and asking is a huge part of that versus us going in and telling them what they want or what we need, unfortunately, historically is what we've done. And so really trying to change that dynamic and that culture change around, you know, engaging and being real partners and rebuilding that trust.
Thank you. Sonia, any final comments?
No, I just, I just feel fortunate to be here and listen to the other ideas being expressed. I got a page of notes here. I intend to go do some things. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, thank you all for joining us, taking the time to do this. This is a great conversation as usual. I wish we had three hours more. But we don't, but we will take your questions. And if it's okay with you, we'll probably pass. I'll send you an email with those. And if you have a chance to just fill out, you know, a couple of sentences on whatever, on the questions, that would be wonderful. And I just want to thank you all for the wonderful work you're doing and your agencies are doing. And we look forward to, to more discussion as we go on. So thank you for joining us and thank you all of the participants for being here. We'll see you all next Tuesday. Great.
Thanks again.
Take care. Bye bye.